We'll now call the June 9, 2015 School Board of St. Lucie County regular meeting to order. Want to extend a warm welcome to each and every one of you here this evening. Would you please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and directly after the kids at hold pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you very much. I would like to remind our audience that if you desire to be a unscheduled speaker, please fill out your forms and turn them into Ms. Harrison, which is sitting on our far left, and we will be happy to acknowledge you at the appropriate time. The vision statement for St. Lucie County Public Schools is that in partnership with parents and the community, we will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work that is provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual child. Our promise is to move from good to great focusing on our core business, which is the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for every child, every day. At this time, I will open up our public hearing to receive comments on the proposed ratification of instructional materials adopted by the Board on April 28, 2015. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, are there any in the audience that would like to speak during this time regarding the public hearing items that are being presented? Seeing none come forward, Madam Chair, we will now receive your recommendations.
Yes ma'am, I recommend that the Board ratify the previous actions taken on April 28, 2015 to approve the adoption of mathematics instructional resource materials for secondary grades, HMH Go Math for grade six through eight, and HMH Core Connections for Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II as presented.
Board members, we have received Superintendent's recommendation. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hilsen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried, five zero. Madam Superintendent, we will move right into our special order of business.
Terrific, thank you. The first special order of business is Weather STEM Donation Program at Southport Middle School. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pam Dampier. I'm looking because several of our folks were at the Civic Center this evening. I'm going to, she is standing there at this time. Mrs. Pam Dampier, if you'll come forward at this time, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost. We're so excited to introduce Mr. Peter Bertolo, former teacher, member of the Weather STEM team. He's partnering with Southport Middle School, and Mrs. Setson is going to give you some additional information of how they're going to partner for the remainder of next year and the equipment that they've installed on the campus so far this year.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Yost, and fellow Board Members, it is a very big honor and pleasure that I get to introduce Mr. Peter Bertolo. Mr. Peter Bertolo has been part of the Weather STEM team, and Southport Middle School actually received the only one in St. Lucie County. It's a very exciting STEM initiative, and it's attached with C-Poms. Through the efforts of our media specialist, we received the weather station back in May, and on the very same day that they actually gave us the unit, they actually provided us with a session for all of our students to see all of the really cool things that it can do for us. So, without further ado, Mr. Peter Bertolo.
Hi there, thank you very much. I've been warned many times that I have two minutes. So, in those two minutes, let me share with you the following. You should have some handouts. Excellent. Read them at your leisure. I just want to tell you briefly that Weather STEM was the vision of our CEO, who is a meteorologist, who invented a piece of software about 20 years ago, which powers the Florida Virtual School, if you ever heard of that. And being a meteorologist, he wanted to get back to his roots, and he decided that it was a great way to bring science, technology, engineering, and math into students' lives. He set on a mission to set up 67 weather stations in the 67 counties of Florida. You were number 34, I believe. We did 46, up to number 40. I did 46 this morning, and we're going to have one in every single county, along with the content, learning, blah, 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 you know, community stuff, group hug, and give a lot of information to students, make it available for teachers, so that, we don't want to give them more work, just give them a place to get information. Bring the world into the classroom. My two minutes are just up. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Perhaps we could have a photo before you sit down, Mr. Bertolo, along with your representative from Southport and the Board Chair, if you'd like to walk down, please.
But this isn't all my two minutes, is it? Oh, you completed your two minutes. (laughter)
recommendation.[476.12][476.12](laughter) He certainly adhered to that, and he internalized that. Our next special order of business is the Generation Green Apple Award, and we have Alapata Flats, who was the first-place Green Garden winner. So I'd like to ask Mrs. Lydia Martin to come forward at this time, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost. I'm pleased to announce that Alapata Flats K-8 School received the first-place Green Garden Award from the U.S. Green Building Council, South Florida Chapter, at its fourth annual Generation Green Apple Awards on May 16. And I would like to thank Ms. Hensley for accepting that award on the school's behalf, but we'd like to recognize them here today. So if the school representatives could join me at the podium, we have Principal Patty Galloway, Assistant Principal Anna Rodriguez, and Teacher Rebecca Benton. The Alapata Flats Garden Program was the inspiration and has been the perspiration of Ms. Benton. She's coordinated the development of multiple gardens on their campus, and the Green Apple Award recognizes and honors individuals, classrooms, schools, and districts in the Treasure Coast region for their commitment to greening schools and our community. Nominees are evaluated based on their demonstration of a commitment to integrating a culture of sustainability into their schools and districts' values, operations, and lifestyles of those they serve, as well as individuals' singular commitments to sustainability. Nominees are evaluated based on their demonstrated leadership advocacy and commitment to the advancement of the mission of the U.S. Green Building Council in the marketplace and the community. I'd like to tell you just a little bit more about the award, but we also have some pictures to share with you. This award has truly been three years in the making and truly a community effort. As a first-year teacher three years ago, Rebecca Benton realized quickly that her first graders needed lots of movement and outside time to keep their minds engaged. So Gators Growing a Love of Reading started in her classroom as a way to encourage learning outside of the classroom by creating a love of science. She knew that she needed some help. Therefore, she applied for and received the Lowe's Outdoor Classroom Education Grant, which is a $5,000 grant to implement a hands-on community project, and the garden began in February of 2013. She also knew that she would need some community support, and she asked for help from Port St. Lucie High School's carpentry class, and they constructed five raised garden beds for the vegetable garden. She also received help from teachers, students at the school, as well as administration, and they came together on a Saturday to plant butterfly plants and lay stepping stones, till land, and assemble benches. She paired visits to the garden with her first-grade curriculum, and students improved their reading and research skills by using nonfiction and reference materials in a way that had meaning for them. She made science and reading have purpose in their everyday lives. She also partnered with gardeners at the University of Florida's local horticultural branch for help and assistance, and several of those gardeners came out to give mini lessons talking about the benefit of growing their own vegetables and different kinds of helpful bugs that they could find in the garden. The following year, with a new group of first graders, she knew that she wanted to continue this, and she quickly fostered their love of planting, watering, weeding, and observing the vegetable garden. She applied for another mini grant from the Florida Agricultural in the classroom and won $500 to buy more garden supplies and other resources to maintain the garden. The garden continued to flourish, and this past year, when she moved grade levels to third grade, the garden still expanded. First graders continued the garden, but she also was able to include fifth graders, her third-grade class, and some ESC classes. It's really been a wonderful opportunity for all of the students to get involved. This year, she wanted to deepen the experience by adding compost so that students could recycle and reuse food waste from the cafeteria. They enjoyed adding banana peels and apple cores to the compost and marveled at how the food decomposed into new soil. They also added a rain barrel to increase the negative environmental impact. The class engaged in several STEM activities involving soil sorts, dissecting food parts, and brainstorming safer food transportation. This garden has really received a lot of local publicity. There was an article in the St. Lucie News Tribune to highlight the gardening project, and they entered some of their vegetables in the St. Lucie County Fair's 48 Vegetable Judging Contest, and they won the whole category two years in a row. The garden has also been featured on Keep Port St. Lucie Beautiful in 2014, and their efforts continue today. And I'm honored to recognize Alapata Flats and Rebecca Benton for their growing a love of reading. Congratulations.[810.61][810.61](applause)
to ask Dr. Kevin Perry to come forward at this time to tell us a little bit more about that resolution.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, Juneteenth is the oldest-known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States dating back to 1865. It was on June 19 that the Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. Note that this was two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official January 1, 1863. Juneteenth is a time to reflect and rejoice, and it is the most popular annual celebration of Black emancipation. Today, Juneteenth is enjoying phenomenal growth within communities and is celebrated annually on June 19 in cities across the United States. Juneteenth celebrates African-American freedom and achievement while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures. While the painful side of slavery is prevalent, it is a positive legacy of perseverance and cooperation that makes it impossible to ignore, because freedom is always worth celebrating. We invite Mr. Forest Grove himself, Mr. Terrence Barriner, Social Studies Department Chair, and the Teacher of the Year for Forest Grove Middle School to bring forward the proclamation for your consideration. Mr. Barriner.
The Resolution in Honor of Juneteenth. Whereas America's Independence Day movement initiated by the Declaration of Independence and the Fourth of July, 1776, did not include enslaved African-Americans, as they were not recognized as full human beings. Freedom from slavery was initiated by the enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, and formally announced by the Union General Gordon Granger in Galveston, Texas, on the 19th of June, 1865. Through the reading of General Order Number Three to the Last Group of Slaves in Bondage Creating America's Second Independence Day Celebration, Juneteenth Independence Day observed on the 19th of June as the oldest African-American holiday. And whereas the 19th of June is the freedom forerunner to the Thirteenth Amendment, which implemented freedom from all slaves in the United States, Juneteenth Independence Day completes the cycle of Independence Day celebrations in America. In 1997, the 105th Congress of the United States passed Senate Joint Resolution 11 and House Joint Resolution 56 officially recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day in America. And whereas in 2008, the U.S. Senate passed SR 584, joining the House of Representatives through the passage of HCR 1237, encouraging the people of the United States to observe Juneteenth Independence Day with appropriate activities and programs. And whereas, the Juneteenth celebration commemorates the emancipation of Southern Blacks on June 19, 1865, two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, the memory of all those who moved from slavery to freedom remains as a lesson for all Americans, regardless of their background, race, or religion. And whereas, the Florida Legislature issued an apology on March 26, 2008, expressing profound regret for the shameful history of enslaving Black people and passing laws that sanctioned involuntary servitude upon generations of African-American descendants. And whereas, Juneteenth is a deserving recognition of the Fourth of July in celebrating the history of American freedom. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County wishes to call your attention to May 20 through July 4, 2015, as Juneteenth Season of Freedom for all Americans as a time to learn more about our common paths and to better understand the experiences that helped shape our nation. Adopted this ninth day of June, 2015.
Stand with me. This particular topic, Juneteenth, is a component of our African-American-St. Lucie Public School curriculum, and as such, I recommend that the Board adopt the Juneteenth Resolution as presented by Mr. Barriner this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barriner. I call for a motion to accept the Resolution of the Juneteenth Resolution. So moved by Ms. Hensley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you again, Mr. Barriner.[1194.33][1194.33](applause)
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost. Today I have two recipients for our STAR Award. Port St. Lucie High would like to nominate their gatekeeper, Mr. Robert Hill. Mr. Hill is an amazing person and colleague. He is such an important part of our school. Every day, he is out at the front of our school greeting everyone who comes to the campus. He waves to every single bus, parent, student, staff member, and visitor who comes to their school, and they all love him. He is the first face of Port St. Lucie High, and he sets the tone for our warm, welcoming environment for everyone who comes here. He knows a little something about almost everyone who passes him in the morning, from what kind of dog they have to when students get their learner's permit. He cultivates wonderful relationships with all of our stakeholders. One of his other responsibilities is picking up students from classrooms that need to be removed. While doing this, he uses the travel time between classrooms and the office to counsel the student. He helps them de-escalate and gain perspective on the situation. He talks to kids throughout the day about what's going on in their lives. He takes the time to care about our kids and does everything in his power to help kids and staff members with whatever they need. He is truly a valuable employee and a wonderful human being with a lifetime of experience that he shares freely. He is a team player who is always willing to help out whenever he is needed, and without him, they would be lost. Mr. Hill.[1381.25][1381.25](applause) And Mr. Hill, if you would just remain up while I also introduce Ms. Marissa Parker. There are two words that can describe Ms. Parker: compassionate and grace. A few months ago, the district was confronted by a father whose family recently relocated to St. Lucie County. His concern was that he had assumed that because his family was receiving other state services, that his children would automatically be granted free lunch. His three children had accumulated a lunch balance that raised a concern with the school lunch staff. Once the family learned that they must complete a free lunch application, they did it immediately. Meanwhile, there was the issue of an outstanding balance that needed to be taken care of. This family was living in a temporary housing situation and financially was unable to resolve the balance immediately and cover the costs for the upcoming week. This father feared that he would have to keep his three children home if they were not going to be able to eat lunch for the week. Ms. Marissa Parker in the Food Services Department handled the situation with compassion, grace, and ease, and assuring the students' balance would be taken care of and that they would have no lapse in receiving free lunch. Marissa did this very quickly. She shows that we need to be compassionate to others who are experiencing some difficulties and help them out whenever we can. Thank you, Ms. Parker, for having such a kind heart. I would also like to add with Marissa, she helps student assignment with our homeless families. We have a 24-hour turnaround that students must be on free lunch, receiving lunch, and I have to say, she does it within minutes. She's really supportive. Can we have their supervisors come up too, please?[1541.23][1541.23](laughter)
You are making a difference in the lives of our students, and we thank you for that. Some things that you do every single day, but they are making a difference. Thank you.
We want to also acknowledge and say thank you to the Weather STEM Donation Program at Southport Middle School. Thank you, Mr. Mansori, we appreciate what you do. And also, congratulations again to the Generation Green Apple Award winners, our Alapata Flats K-8 School. Moving right along with our reports, we will first have our CTA report. Mrs. Rodriguez, good evening. If you would, please come to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm speaking to you tonight for the first time in my new role as the President of the St. Lucie Classroom Teachers Association. Christine Hill, our Vice President, is here with me as well. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and with our new Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent as we go forward into 2015, 16, and beyond. I have three things that I wanted to bring forward tonight. The first is a concern, the second is a bit of a challenge, and the third is a request. The first concern is an extreme concern for the 400 positions that the district is going to be trying to fill this summer. We've been told to prepare for at least 400 new teachers at new teacher orientation. That's about 10% or a little bit more than 10% of our total teaching force. There were 176 non-reappointments for one reason or another, or 119 resignations as of May 29. And since the district continues to lose teachers who are now resigning after they've been reappointed, that number is sure to climb. This is an overwhelming number of positions for a district our size, for a district that's not opening new schools, for a district that's not seeing an influx of more students, for a district that is not seeing a huge boom in new houses being developed. We have schools, especially in the Green Zone, that had already had unfilled and opened positions almost the entire year, and now are losing somewhere between 20% and 30% of their actual teaching staff. What is the plan? We've got to have a plan. We want to be involved in the plan. Our greatest concern is that we will start the year with 100 unfilled positions or more and have 100 unfilled positions throughout the year, and that I'll be standing here again next year talking about the 100 unfilled positions plus all the ones we need to fill. So, this is where the challenge part comes in. What I'm planning to do as President of the Union, and I said this before I was elected, and now I get to actually make it happen, which is sometimes an unusual thing when someone has made a promise before they're elected and then they actually are elected. I want to walk in my members' shoes, and I plan to do that at least twice a month. And what that means is, I plan to spend the day with a member in their work role, whatever that happens to be, doing the job that they're doing alongside of them. I don't mean that I'm going to go and visit- I don't mean that I'm going to go and visit and sit and read and then have a nice catered lunch and go back and say everything's hunky-dory at the school. I really want to see the truth, because sometimes the things that I hear may or may not be accurate. I want to be there and hear those things, too. And I want to challenge you all and our new Superintendent and our new Deputy Superintendent who's getting confirmed tonight at this board meeting to do the same. Just like I'm going to take a day or possibly two every month out of my job to go and spend time actually listening to the people that are doing the work, I really want to encourage you to figure out a way to make that happen yourselves. I know every once in a while, a few of you have time and go out to a school, but Vanessa has said this for years, and I've taken that to heart, and that's something that's important to me, and that's what I intend to do. We have a disconnect. All of us have a disconnect. And the longer we're out of a school, the harder it is to actually connect with what's really going on in there. And I'm admitting that here publicly to all of you, that there are things that go on in schools that I don't understand, and I have to understand them in order to help the people that I'm supposed to be helping. And I think the same goes for you as elected officials, same goes for our Superintendent and for our Deputy Superintendent. So, that's my challenge to you. And I think that would help actually alleviate some of our recruitment and retention problem as well. It'll be like Undercover Boss, except for the undercover part. And the TV cameras. My next request, my next thing is a request, and it's both simple and complex. On your agenda tonight, you have a recommendation: to terminate a good teacher. Jean McGuire is on your agenda to be terminated tonight. She's been a kindergarten teacher. She's been a kindergarten teacher at Savannah Ridge for 12 years. She isn't in trouble. She hasn't done anything wrong. I've never had to represent her. Parents don't complain about her. What she did was get injured three years ago by a student in her classroom while she was trying to keep other kids from being injured. And so, she got two herniated discs in her neck. Her kids have written her love notes. Her loyal colleagues are here with her. She has evaluations that are effective, highly effective, for the last five years, including this year, the year of her termination. This year, it's highly effective. Why does this matter? Because you're being asked to fire her. You're being asked to fire her because the district has determined that after three years of performing a job post-injury, that she can no longer perform the job of a teacher. Now, is Jean 100% of the physical person she was prior to her injury? No, she's not. She has no feeling in two of her fingers on her right hand. She cannot lift more than five pounds. She can't reach overhead, and she can only use the computer for a limited amount of time. She can teach reading and math and social skills. Her test scores and her final evaluations determine that. And every year, she has been evaluated fairly and accurately. Jean has also been a mentor and a leader on her campus these last three years since her injury. She was the DAC representative. She was the SAC chair. She's been the kindergarten grade chair for three years, including this year, the year of her alleged year that she can't do her job. Has it been easy for her? No, it hasn't. She's learned to write with her left hand. She's over 60, so you want to think about the requirement for that. She's learned to write with her left hand. She's had to ask colleagues to assist in moving boxes. She's had to have volunteers tear workbook pages out of workbooks. And instead of reaching over her kidney table to track print for kids as they're reading, she moves them closer to her on her left side and does it with them sitting right next to her. We make accommodations, and the district is required to make accommodations for persons with temporary or permanent disabilities all the time. And I think everyone sitting up there could probably think of someone that they know that has had accommodations made for them in this school district. Jean McGuire does not require any special equipment, tools, or fancy technology. What she needs is the assistance of her willing colleagues and a volunteer or two, perhaps, to help do those things that I just mentioned. These are all things that are reasonable, and they don't cost anything. The Americans with Disabilities Act applies to both individuals who are handicapped or injured in some way outside of the workplace, as well as to those who are injured on the job. Just because they're injured on the job doesn't mean we don't have to provide accommodations. I have been marrying work sites myself where teachers who have vision problems, use wheelchairs, are unable to lift heavy items, are all accommodated. This situation is no different. The district has had the same documentation for three years regarding Jean's injury. She's been doing the same job for three years. She's been evaluated effective and highly effective for three years, except this year, on May 22nd, she got a letter from the school district that said it's been determined that she's no longer capable of doing the job she's been doing highly effectively. Jean McGuire could retire. She actually has just one more year left of drop, but she still wants to teach. And frankly, with 400 open positions, we still need her to teach. You have the option, as a board, to disagree with the Superintendent's recommendation to terminate Ms. McGuire. You can actually act in the name of what makes sense, especially since the rules don't seem to apply to everyone equally. You can even postpone it if you really want to do a little bit more research and trust that what I'm telling you here is the truth. Jean wasn't allowed to say goodbye to her students. When she received a letter on May 22nd, she was not allowed to go back to her classroom, not allowed to say goodbye to her colleagues or her kids. She left them two days before Field Day that they had been planning. She had made them all Minion shirts, along with her own. Parents received a note that said she would be gone for the rest of the year. The children lost their teacher overnight with no explanation. I tried three different times to appeal to the Superintendent personally and to HR. Nothing. So, this is our last stop. Jean is here. She wants to teach. She wants another year. Jean got her degree at 47. All she ever wanted to do was teach. She was in college, and tragedy struck, and she had to leave college to come home, take care of her brother, and got married and had kids, and eventually went back to school. She worked full-time and took care of her kids and finally got her degree. She's been teaching for 19 years, 12 of those years in St. Lucy County. Every single one of those years, successful. She can still have another successful year. You have 400 positions. Please pull her termination off the agenda. Find out why we can't figure out a way to keep a teacher who wants to stay. I am very sorry for my emotional state at the moment, but there's a lot of stuff that does not make sense to me, and this is one of them. I sincerely look forward with hope and great enthusiasm to the next few years and hope that we can bring some sense back to what we do, and that when we recognize people for the good things that they do at schools and we give them the Star Award, that we don't just mean it for that moment. We mean it for people like Jean.
See WA report? Okay, seeing none. We will move toward our consent agenda, Board Members. We have the agenda before us. I would entertain a motion at this time to accept the agenda as presented. So moved by Ms. Harley. Did I hear a second? Second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so we have the agenda before us, and the motion carries 5-0. Are there any conflicts you need to declare on any of the items, Board Members, coming before us? No conflicts. Hearing none. Madam Superintendent, may we receive your recommendations?
I believe before we move forward with the recommendations, I heard at least two that were opposed, so we need to modify those who were in favor of moving forward with the consent agenda. Mr. Harold, do you have any advice at this time?
Simply need the minutes to reflect the actual vote of the membership on adoption of the consent.
Okay, so was that a 3-2 or a 2-3 is what I'm wondering at this point? Because...
And that is only to...
Move forward. That would be accurate.
Move forward. It's not to make the vote right now.
Yes, ma'am. I understand that. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
With that clarification, I recommend the board approve a total of 20 consent agenda items, beginning with number 8.1 and ending with 17.1 as presented.
Board Members, we have received the recommendations. Are there any items you wish to comment on or discuss and therefore pull out for separate vote?
Madam Chair, I have both, actually. Both fall under the personnel agenda. There are two that I wish to comment on, and I do wish to pull for separate vote. What was brought before us tonight was regarding Ms. McGuire. I don't feel like we know all of the information, and I'm not in good conscience able to vote on that without it.
So, you are pulling out 11.1?
That's correct.
Okay, and you have two areas you would like to comment on as well?
That's correct, as well.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, Ms. Harley, please make your comments first. And before you do that, yes, make your comments first.
Okay. My comment is actually a follow-up from our last meeting when I brought forth some of the appointments that are coming before us now, and we have two on the agenda tonight. One, Ms. Carrie Patrick will be named the Chief Communication Officer, and Mr. Jonathan Prince will be named the Deputy Superintendent. And just to reiterate that both of those are appointments coming from our new Superintendent, and that neither position will actually take effect until July 1. I just wanted to distinguish that it was incoming Superintendent appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Harley. Please go on now to your 11.1 discussion, a separate vote.
I would like to pull for separate vote, just the agenda item regarding the termination of Ms... Not the entire 11.1, just the line item for Ms. McGuire and her situation. Not aware of the things that were brought to our attention tonight. Normally, the board does not interfere in personnel issues. That's typically beyond our realm, but I am not comfortable moving forward with that particular recommendation until we have all of the facts and the ability to review it.
Okay, at this time, before we go any further, Superintendent Yost, may we have your recommendations on the remaining items?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend that the board approve a total of 20 consent agenda items, beginning with 8.1 and ending with 17.1, with an amendment to pull the termination of Ms. Jean Marie McGuire, which is a line item contained within item number 11.1 on the consent agenda.
Okay, very good. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll, and second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0, and now we have pulled the separate item for vote, for discussion and separate vote. Is there any other Board Members that would like to comment at this time?
Two comments, real quickly. Number one, this is a bad precedent on many, many, many levels. It's been on the agenda for two weeks, and to hear it at a meeting like this is a little discerning, probably not only for this Board Member, but a couple other Board Members, too. On both sides, we should have heard a plea or a phone call rather than doing it in a public meeting. That's one issue. The second issue is, are we postponing this to the next meeting? Is that our... I'm addressing this to Attorney Harold. When we vote no, what are we voting, actually, no on, or is this a postponement for us to get more information?
Madam Chair, Mr. Ingersoll, the board would need to take specific action on the recommendation for the termination. So, if you wish to continue the matter to your next meeting or to another date certain, or if you need to simply reject the Superintendent's recommendation, but at that point in time, I'm not sure what her status is, whether or not, what would be the action if it's merely a withdrawal? Probably, if the board does not wish to act tonight, likely, the best move would be to move it to a date certain and secure additional information so that the board is in a position to make an informed decision if you are unsure tonight.
What was that, Ms. Hensley?
The recommendation should probably be to move it to the next meeting, and that gives time to get the information.
And I'm comfortable with that, having made the motion to pull that for separate vote.
Let's go for you. Thank you.
Well, if it looks like we have to go ahead and vote on that motion, that we will postpone it to the next board meeting, is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Is there a second on that?
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, your motion. Are you seconding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor? Nay.
All in favor? Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm saying nay. I like to handle it right now, so I'm saying nay to that.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor would be...
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. What about Ms. Hensley? Aye? Carol?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Until the next meeting.
Postpone to the next meeting, so motion carries 4-1. Okay? And it will be postponed to the next meeting. Okay. Board Members, we have before us the stipulation... That was just a recommendation. Okay, at this time, we're going to vote on the remaining of the agenda that has been recommended by Superintendent Yost. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by Harley.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, now we're going to move forward. Are we clear? Everybody's clear on that? Okay. All right, Board Members, we have before us our stipulating findings of fact, conclusions of law, and penalties, and final orders. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law, and penalty, and final orders, number 547 through 565.
Okay, we've heard the recommendation, Board. Motion on the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Harley, and second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Superintendent Yost, it's time for your update.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to begin by commenting on the ratification of CWA. We were aware of CTA and CU at the last board meeting, but wanted to create an awareness regarding the ratification of the $440 agreement for the LOU and the board approval of the LOU at the May 12 meeting concerning the one-time bonus. So, that was ratified by our CWA. Also, wanted to commend Jonathan Speerkoff of Port St. Lucy High School... wanted to commend Jonathan Speerkoff of Port St. Lucie High School. He was announced as the winner of the Second Annual Fetterman and Associates Scholarship Project entitled "My Most Influential Teacher." And he focused on Mr. John McGallagher, who is retiring this year as the band director at Port St. Lucie High School. And so, we...five individuals were chosen and awarded $1,000 scholarship through this particular project. So, congratulations to Jonathan Speerkoff and to Mr. McGallagher on that focus of his life and the impact he's had on students. During the consent agenda, we did have several assistant principals that have been conferred for appointment, and I'd like to introduce them in alphabetical order. If they could stand when recognized, I would appreciate it, beginning with Ms. Lisa Cash, who's being appointed Assistant Principal at Northport K8. Ms. Jennifer Ingersoll, if you'll stand, please, being appointed Assistant Principal at Rivers Edge Elementary. Ms. Lakeitha Jackson, Assistant Principal at Dale Casson's Educational Complex. Ms. Alexandra Lautis, better known as Lexi, being appointed as Assistant Superintendent at Lawnwood Elementary. Oh, Assistant Principal. Did I say principal? She's wearing a sigh of relief. Let me repeat that. Ms. Lexi Lautis, appointed to the position of Assistant Principal at Lawnwood Elementary. The final appointment to Assistant Principal is Marcy Lucky to the position of Assistant Principal at St. Lucie Elementary. And one final appointment at St. Lucie Elementary, we have two appointments to that site, Assistant Principals, is Angela Patton. So, congratulations to all six of you on your appointments. We're looking forward to a fabulous year ahead. Thank you, ladies. Also on the agenda this evening, as Ms. Harley indicated, is the appointment of Ms. Carrie Patrick to the position of Chief Communications Officer. Ms. Patrick has been serving in that role, I should say, her responsibilities have been aligned with that role, as she has served as the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Patrick is in the audience with us this evening. Ms. Patrick, if you could please stand? We know you'll do a phenomenal job in that position. And then, our deputy superintendent is Jonathan Prince, and that appointment and introduction will come as soon as Mr. Gent arrives on the job. So, congratulations to him as well. Also wanted to comment on Ms. Rodriguez's invitation, that she was going to...wasn't part of an invitation. She actually included it. Let me see the exact wording. She said that it would be a challenge to walk in the members' shoes. And I commend her for that because as partners, the president and vice president have been invited to attend SHINE meetings, to walk in classrooms with us over the years, and I am thrilled to see, as president, that she will be assuming those responsibilities. She is absolutely correct in that when we remove ourselves from the classroom, there is a disconnect, and we need to remain connected to our teachers and their daily responsibilities. So, I applaud her as making that a campaign promise and then following through on that. So, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Attorney Harold, do we have any comments or updates? Okay, board members, we will begin with Ms. Ingersoll.
No report.
Okay, Ms. Harley. Ms. Hilson.
Just a thank you to our principals and the beautiful graduations, and Dr. Perry, who did a phenomenal job of pulling thousands of people together. And I don't think we had any accidents. I think things...usually, there's a car accident on the way to one of the graduations, but I thought they went off very smoothly, and thanks to Dr. Perry for his leadership in that. And I wanted to tell Vicky Rodriguez, thank you also for the offer of the partnership. I think that we do need to remember what it's like in the trenches every day, day after day after day. And I thank you for that invitation to us to come and be a part of what you're doing, and I am very happy that we were able to ratify and move forward during the summer. But thank you for your words that you shared.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson. Ms. Hensley, please.
I would just challenge everybody to, you know, we're in special session, to watch carefully, read everything that comes out, to follow what's actually going on there in conference on a daily basis. I mean, this is one of the, I think, the only time I've ever gotten anything that came to me on a Sunday night after they were in a meeting. So, it's unfortunate that they didn't seem to take their job quite as seriously while they're in regular session, but I would challenge you to follow what's really going on and be brave to give input to your legislators when you see that there may be some wavering with their stamina to stay the course.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Want to remind everyone that we do have the musical next week, the Port St. Lucie Musical, Dr. Sooth. And please go online and on-site, school site, and look up the times and where you can get your tickets from. At this time, seeing that there are no unscheduled speakers coming before us this evening, we will end with the reminder of our mission statement. Our mission statement for St. Lucie County Public Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, the skills, and the desire to succeed. Board members, I believe we still have an executive session that will take place directly after the board meeting. We look forward to seeing everyone else at the next board meeting, which will be held June 23, 2015, to all our administrators, our educators, support staff, and especially to our students. Please have a safe and wonderful summer. Good night to all, and we are adjourned.